We're not on the record. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular scheduled meeting of the District of Columbia Alcoholics Beverage Control Board. Today is Wednesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and the time is approximately ten forty-four A.M. This meeting has been conducted pursuant to guidance made available by the District of Columbia Office of Open Government regarding electronic meetings held by public bodies during the public health emergency. Pursuant to this guidance, notice of today's meetings was provided forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting on ABRA's website and on the district's central meeting calendar. The notice included the time, date, agenda, and call-in or login information for public participation. This electronic meeting has been hosted by a WebEx account provided by the District of Columbia government. Please address any questions or complaints to the OOG at openggovoffice@dc.gov. My name is Donovan Anderson, and I'm chairman of the board. I would like to introduce the other members of the board who are also participating electronically pursuant to Mayor's Order two thousand twenty zero five four. Please respond when I announce your name. Mr. James Short. Mr. Short, please turn. I cannot hear you. Turn your microphone on. Mr. Short, please, please open, please unmute. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Short.
Yes, Mr. James Short present.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Mr. Bobby Cato.
Bobby Cato present.
Ms. Rema Wahabzada.
Rema Wahabzada present.
Ms. Rafi Crockett.
Rafi Crockett present.
Ms. Jenny Hansen.
Jenny Hansen present.
The board has six members in attendance today for the conduct of business, and that constitute a quorum. Our first order of business is today, it's our calendar, and it's a fact-finding hearing by Rhino Investments LLC to be determined license number nine-nine-four-six-seven. The request has been made from Rhino um to for request to extend their um safekeeping. And can we have the representative from Rhino introduce themselves for the record, starting with their attorney?
Stephen O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, good morning.
Morning. And I think Justin Hicks representing Rhino is on the uh call also.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Hicks. Uh, Mr. Hicks, you need to open your, open your. We cannot hear you, Mr. Hicks, so you need to open your. We cannot hear you. Mr. Hicks. We cannot hear you, Miss. I don't know what is it you did before, but we heard you before, but we can't hear you now. We cannot hear you, Mr. Hicks. We still can't hear you. What I suggest that you do, Mr. Hicks, why don't you sign off and sign back in, please? And um board member Grandis has joined us. Mr. Grandis, can you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yes, uh, good afternoon. My name is Edward Grandis.
And good morning again, Mr. Grandis. So the board now has seven members, all seven members are here to participate in this meeting today. We're 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 waiting for Mr. Hicks to come back on because he was having some technical issues. So as soon as Mr. Hicks comes back on, we will um resume the hearing. Can you even hear me now? Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Hicks. Good morning. Thank you. And while you're away, Mr. Hicks, uh, Mr. Grandis has joined us, so we now have um all seven board members are participating. You know, Mr. O'Brien, we had a request was made, I think in November, for a fact-finding hearing. We had a fact-finding hearing in November. And um assurance were made to us by Mr. by both Mr. Hicks and yourself in November, basically telling us that um if the board approves the safekeeping requests, if we grant the safekeeping request through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, that the licensee would not come back to the board and request another. Um, no, the the licensee basically says that if by March thirty-first two two, if by March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, if we don't have any license in transfer at that point, I will not seek another extension. That was a court that was provided to us by Mr. Hicks um at the last hearing in November of two thousand nineteen. Our request is now being made for another safekeeping request, so maybe, Mr. O'Brien, you can update us where we are and why is another, whether or not has that condition been met? And if it has not been met, why another safekeeping request has been made?
Uh, the answer is that condition has not been met.
You said it has or has not?
Has not.
Okay, go ahead. So so why?
There is no transfer application to a specific location on file. That was the condition. It has not been met. I'll let Mr. Hicks speak to this more particularly. But long and short is that the health emergency has upset all apple carts. Um, and that is the, generally speaking, the reason uh why, but I'll let Mr. Hicks elaborate.
Sure. Thank you for your time. Um, Chairman and Chairwoman of the board, um, yeah, we were um you know, early in the year, we were close with many properties, and we were absolutely planning on being successful in this endeavor. As you know, the health emergency with COVID came along and upset everything. Um, since that time, we had to put everything on hold. Um, as that business model, at least in our opinion, um, i- is not a viable one until there's some clarity and some stability uh in the market, and that, you know, there's a path forward that how we could operate, open and operate, you know, a tavern um both safely and profitably uh in in Georgetown. Now, we think that there's opportunity ahead as we, you know, get closer towards the vaccine, and we get some clarity and the uh how these businesses will operate. As you well know, you know, not just D.C., but around the country, the bar and restaurant industry has been pretty much decimated. Um, and, you know, I, while there may be people opening bars, I don't know, I I I, you know, we are not in a position where we feel it's the right time to to open one, but we do feel we're in the position that we've got the capital, we still maintain the the determination and the will to open one. We think there'll be a rebuilding in Georgetown and other places around the country. Um, the first, the individual that I work for, the owner of Rhino Investments, is a Georgetown resident. He's got access to lots of capital and looks forward to rebuilding that area. Um, so I think an extension will allow us to, you know, seize upon an opportunity to open a business at the appropriate time as there's, you know, a little more clarity and stability and and be part of that rebuilding effort.
Do you have anything else you want to say, Mr. Hicks, or Mr. O'Brien? Before before the board asks questions?
Yes, um, the issue, I think, at this point is whether any or any business can open with any prospect of success. Now, I don't have any statistics, but I, but I'm very confident, I know at least from the workflow in our office, that the number of new applications for new licenses for on-premises consumption received by ABRA since the emergency began is greatly diminished. I'm not saying there haven't been any, but they are much fewer and far between. Uh, no, no on-premise business is making money now. Everyone is losing money. The only issue is how much is each one losing? And in that climate, opening a business just doesn't make any sense. Um, and one other point I'd like to make, at the last um uh fact-finding hearing, uh, the chair observed that someone else ought to be given a chance to open a business um if if Rhino is not going to proceed. But I can assure you, what's going to happen is if this license is made available and ABRA makes a a public announcement, there's now one tavern license available in Georgetown, a new business, I can assure you, is not going to come in and say, yes, we want it. What's going to happen is an existing CR business that perhaps is marginal with food service or doesn't want to fool with the quarterly reports anymore, will come in and snatch it up. So there won't be new business opening in Georgetown. Just an existing business will convert its class. Um, uh, at at this point, um, I I suggest that that the um most prudent course of action is for us to await how the um COVID-nineteen shakes out. Uh, anything uh other than that at this point is uh I I don't think ultimately going to be productive from the board's point of view.
Anything else, any other, prior to the board asking questions, anything else you guys want to want to say?
No, we'd be glad to respond to board questions.
Uh, the first question that I that I have is that the representation was was made in in November, and the representation was made in November. It was that all this will, certain events would occur by March thirty-first. Yes, we are all aware that the pandemic, but the pandemic did not, the public health emergency didn't occur until the latter part of March. So our, my position is that you had November, December, January, February, and March, and if you had told March. And if you if you came to the board and basically stated that we were, we found a property, we signed a contract. However, based on the pandemic, we have to revisit our business models. So because we have to revisit our business model, we're not able to move forward. But you're not telling us that you have even signed a contract. You're basically bootstrapping by saying, you know, the the pandemic, we now need to revisit our business model, and I understand that, based on the pandemic, yes, everyone is revisiting his business model. But the presentation that was made today, you have not stated to me that we 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 were at the, we were at the juncture to sign a contract, to sign a a a lease. And so that we were, this is what we were doing, and then the pandemic occurred, so therefore we have to pull back and revisit. I've not heard that, so I'm not quite sure. It doesn't appear to me that this, you, that anything has changed from the last time, the the last time you're in front of the board. And when you respond, the person responding, please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, this is us, Steve O'Brien, responding, Mr. Chair. I I say two things. Number one, I would ask the board that Mr. Hicks just stated that earlier this year, um, he was getting very close on location. Uh, the second thing I would say is although the health emergency is not declared in the district um until middle of March, in fact, everyone has, in the industry, has known there was big trouble since at least mid-February.
Can, hold on, before before you respond, could I ask all board members, if you're not speaking, to put your phone on mute? If you're not speaking, please put your phone on mute, and then once you're about to speak, unmute yourself. Go ahead, respond, whoever needs to respond, please go ahead. Were you done, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I had finished.
Do you have anything you want to ask Mr. Mr. Hicks?
Um, no, just to to, ye- yes, up until in into March, um, we were actively negotiating properties. We had, while we did not have a contract executed, we were, we had lots of LOIs actions of property at that time. Um, so we were, and I was uh leading that effort, uh, very active with our real estate brokers uh in trying to find a a a a good location. Um, several properties, both on M. and on Wisconsin, um, we were in price negotiations uh with and and LOI stage, a later LOI stage, I should say.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. F. Mr. Grandis asking a question. Go ahead, Mr. Grandis.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, uh, it's good to see you. Um, would your client be willing to provide the board any of these LOIs that that were um that that have been alleged to to help us in understanding what what exactly was happening regarding trying to find a location in Georgetown for a CT?
Um, and my my concern there would be a main maintenance of confidentiality. I would not have a problem, I think, in camera uh for those non-lawyer, uh, Mr. Grandis knows what I mean, uh, Mr. Anderson does for the non-lawyers, meaning for the board to look at them, but they not be shared with the public. It's a business negotiation.
Yeah, tha- thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
All right. Do we have any other questions by the board members? Go ahead, Ms. Crockett. I see you. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Hicks, you stated that you were inactive negotiations as late as March. Did you decide to cut off those negotiations because of your concern that, you know, opening a restaurant or tavern during this time would not be profitable? Uh, I mean, why did those negotiations stop? Was that at when you're in? Was that at the 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 other party's end? Why did those negotiations come to an end?
Uh, it was, it was on our end, and I mean, that was driven from a, you I represent, you know, the 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 person who owns Rhino, I work for him for another company called M.C. Dean. Um, we're a government contractor, and I I do lots, all the investment for them as well. Um, so it was not only just Rhino Investments, but M.C. Dean behind it, you know, who saw this, let's say, um, economic impact coming. Um, so, you know, financial investments and investments uh across the board were were put on hold company-wide, and that flowed down to these. Um, and we decided that we needed to wait and see how this was going to impact the uh the market. And since that, the pandemic, um, we you know, we, while we keep an eye on the market and look at, see what's out there, um, we don't feel, as we mentioned before, um, it's the right time to open a a tavern, despite the fact that we we want to and we want to participate, you know, going forward, once there's a stability. But we were the initiator, to answer your question, we were the initiator of of pulling out of those uh of LOIs, with the exception of one uh that got sold in uh in March, despite uh we had a higher offer on.
Any other questions by any of the board members?
Chairman, Mr. Hicks.
Go ahead, Mr. Short.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I would really like to enter on the record that because of this COVID-nineteen pandemic, nationwide trends have been to wait. I um would like to also go on the record stating that I've heard our executives in most high places in the United States of America try to press things on as if they're normal. This is not our normal. This is our new normal. I would like to think that uh this board would consider um that this COVID-nineteen has caused a lot of businesses to make decisions that work for the public safety and work for their own pocket safety in that uh this isn't the end of the line, and I would like to think that we make decisions based on this COVID-nineteen pandemic now, and um and just be reasonable. There's not a lot of businesses opening up now. There are fact, a lot of businesses closing down now. And I would like to think that once the COVID is gone, we would reconsider a lot of things that we cannot consider possibly now during the pandemic. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. 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 Short. Do we have any questions by any other board members? All right, um, hearing none. Um, either Mr. Hicks or Mr. O'Brien, do you want to make any any of any closing statements, please?
No, no, sir. I'd say this is O'Brien speaking. I'd simply be repeating what I already said.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Hicks?
Um, I as well. Um, just want to assure you of our, you know, continued determination to do this. We we do have an interest, uh, and we certainly thank you for all the uh time in the past that you've that you've given us. I hope they go forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We'll bring this 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 hearing to a close. The board will take this matter under advisement, and we will get back to you regarding our final determination. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. We now move to our legal agenda, and the first matter on our legal agenda is to review an offer and compromise in lieu of a hearing regarding Penn Quarters, Penn Penn Quarter Sports Tavern, license number seven-six-zero-three-nine. The offering compromise is that is that the District of Columbia jointly with the licensee respondent submits this offering compromise, OIC, to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board as authorized by twenty-three DCMR Section sixteen oh four point five for approval by the board. The parties understand that if the board approves the OIC, this case will conclude, and the scheduled showcause hearing will be vacated. Respondent will be obliga- obligated to abide by the terms of the OIC, if fine, suspension, both, or other terms shown below. If the board does not approve the OIC, the matter will be continued to the scheduled showcause showcause hearing, which is not currently set. The respondent has been advised that there is no obligation to accept an OIC. Respondent has been advised through service of the Notice of Status Hearing and Show Cause Hearing that a showcause hearing respondent may be represented by legal counsel, have subpoenas issued to require the production of witnesses and evidence, produce witnesses' evidence, cross-examine witnesses, and apply to the board for a qualified interpreter. The terms of the OIC is followed. Um, charge one, increased sidewalk cafe seating. The Statutor, Statutor Authority's DC Code Section twenty-five dash seven-sixty-two B two. The OIC is that for charge one, there will be a warning. Is there a second?
Mr. Short, I second.
Mr. Short, I second the motion. I will now take a roll call vote on the motion that was that has been properly seconded. Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, I agree.
Mr. Cato?
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Ms. Wahabzada?
Rema Wahabzada, I agree.
Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett?
Crockett, I agree.
Ms. Hanson?
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mr. Grandis?
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree. The OIC is accepted seven-zero-zero. Thank you. Um, the next matter on our legal agenda, it's a review of a correspondence dated August seventh, two thousand twenty, from the Shepherd Park Citizens Association, requesting that the ABC Board schedule a showcause hearing to address alleged violations committed by Champion Kitchen. The matter is Champion Kitchen, license number one-zero-three-zero-five-five. It is my understanding that Ms. Jefferson from the Shepherd Park Citizens Association would like to address the board today, so I would ask Ms. Jefferson, can you please unmute your phone, and you are welcome to address this, bring this issue to the attention of the board. Ms. Jefferson?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Jefferson, I can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Anderson and members of the ABC Board. Um, as he stated, my name is Naima Jefferson, and I'm the president of the Shepherd Park Citizens Association. I think I can safely state, without offending any members of the board, that our community's hope was that after participating in a series of new applicant and renewal protest hearings last year, we would at least have a year or two before appearing before the board again. Unfortunately, here we are where we are. It has been our community's hope that the Upper Georgia Avenue corridor bordering Silver Spring be a safe, healthy, and thriving corridor comprising of law-abiding businesses. That hope is best demonstrated when our association has participated in cleanup, uh, plantings, as well as worked with businesses to promote them even throughout the COVID pandemic to keep these businesses alive and prosperous. The events that transpired that led to our board sending the August seventh letter should be a disappointment to us all at best. Our association had expressed concerns as to whether this establishment is in fact a restaurant on numerous occasions. As stated in our letter submitted to the August, um, submitted to the board on August seventh, the record from the renewal hearing substantiated that the licensee had been notified numerous times about violations of the D.C. smoking exemption laws, the settlement agreement, and its license and settlement agreement relating to seating and the capacity of patrons in the establishment. In addition, there was an offer of compromise back in, I believe, two thousand and nineteen regarding the seating and capacity as well. The events outlined in Case Report nineteen CMP zero-zero-two-fourteen, whereby one ABRA investigator informed the licensee twice about violations regarding the smoking exemption. This is in addition to the three cease and desist that were mentioned uh by the Department of Health, as well as um the numerous um evidence uh that was submitted on the record during the protest hearing. What this does is essentially essentially establish that there appears to be an unwillingness for the licensee to comply with District of Columbia laws. This is particularly concerning during the public health emergency when eating at restaurants and bars have been cited by both Montgomery County and D.C. Health as an opportunity for community transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus. Um, our our association's request is that uh the case be heard and that the license be revoked um due to the the aforementioned uh statements and circumstances, and I am open to uh any questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
All right, um, Ms. Jefferson, thank you for your comment comments regarding regarding your concerns about Champion Kitchen and your desire that the board hold a showcause hearing. Please know that the board had case number nineteen CMP zero-zero-two-one-four scheduled for a status uh status hearing on on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and for a showcause hearing scheduled on June tenth, two thousand twenty. Unfortunately, due to the public health emergency, all of the board's hearings, not just Champion Kitchen, were continued to a date to be determined. It is the board's intention to resume status and showcause hearings in October. Until then, I'm referring your letter to the Enforcement Division to continue with its monitoring of the establishment and its investigation of any alleged violation. Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Um, we're not going to have any questions to ask you. We you'd have one opportunity to address the board, and so we are affording you that opportunity, but the board, we will will afford this matter to enforcement for further action.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for participation today. Have a great day. Thank you very much, ma'am. All right. So let's continue on our legal agenda, and the next matter on our legal agenda is a review of the suspension of on-promised, on-premise alcohol sales and consumption due to the public emergency notice of six emergency rulemaking. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Bobby Cato seconds.
Mr. Cato, I second the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, I agree.
Mr. Cato?
Mr. Cato, I agree.
Ms. Wahabzada? Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next matter on our agenda, it's a review of the addition of outdoor seating on public and private space. Notice of third emergency rulemaking. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Mister Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter that matter therefore passes seven zero zero. Alright, so. Let's now move to our supplemental legal agenda. The first matter on our supplemental legal agenda is a review of the Second Amendment settlement agreement dated August fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Between A N C six E and cloakroom license number zero eight seven eight seven five. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passed seven zero zero. We now move to our licensing agenda. The first matter on our licensing agenda is a review request to extend extend safekeeping of license for um to be determined. Formerly Gladys Nguyen's license number one one four two seven two. I make a motion that we approve this request through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Miss Crockett and Miss Wahab Zada has seconded the motion. We will now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter on our license agenda. It's a review of application for a summer garden endorsement with thirty seats. The request has been made by Hellbender Brewing Company license number zero nine three five zero zero. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote before it's an emotion that's been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next request, the next. Matter on our licensing agenda is is the review request to correct approved license application to change. Two summer gardens to one sidewalk cafe with eighty-seven seats after determined that the patio falls on public space. The que the request has been made by Swingers license number one one four five four five. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passed seven zero zero. We now move to our supplemental licensing agenda. The first matter on our supplemental license agenda, it's a review. Application for stipulated licenses letter of anc support to operate with new hours. The request has been made by Popella license number zero two five zero eight four. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded by Mister Short. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter is a review request and documentation documentation to update premises address. To four 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 eighth Street Northwest following expansion project. The request has been made by Cedar. License number Z zero eight one one five seven. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that second. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis. Mister Grandis.
Uh Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter is a review request from wholesalers to be allowed to deliver alcohol and beverage shipments to the licensee. While docked in D C waters at City Dock Zero Cameron Street, Alexandria, Virginia. The request is um by regarding toss ship Providence. Um license number one one three eight seven one. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Uh Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. We now move to our cancellation agenda. The board, the A B C board will be canceled on the following license for the reasons outlined below. Milk Bar Center D C license number. Zero nine eight seven four zero. The licensee request cancellation. I make a second. I'm sorry, I I make a motion that we cancel this license. Mister Grandis has seconded the motion. We'll have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Mister Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passed seven zero zero. The second request is again by Milk Bar Center D C. This is their caterer's license. License number one zero zero eight two five. Um the licensee request cancellation. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Um Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next request is the meet in place license number zero seven four six six one. The licensee again request cancellation. I make a motion that we cancel this license. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote before the um on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes four zero seven zero zero. Thank you. Alright, we now move to our docket, and our docket is basically a request that's been made to make changes in in um. In a in a license that already been issued or or to issue a license. The first request is being made by City Corner Market license number one one six eight five zero. This is a new A B C license application. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada. Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Matthew Greshen license number twenty I M P zero 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 one seven. For a personal import import permit application. I make a motion that we grant this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
And Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter is a request by Nathan Piumiu license number twenty I M P. Zero 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 one eight. This is also for personal importation permit application. I make a motion that we grant this request. Is there a second?
Rafi Crockett, I second.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by um Cafe Deluxe license number nine four one one eight zero. For a trade trade name change application. The new name will be Chef Golf West End. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded by Mister Short. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Oh, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Prestige Beverage Group license number nine two eight four five. It is a trade name application. The 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 new name is Prestige Detroit Distribution Company. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. Um just for the public, if the public is gonna participate, I have the next, I think. Ten um applications are being made by Whole Foods. To make some changes, although they call them the same name, but they're different license numbers because they're making different changes, so. We will vote on them individually. So the first request is by Whole Foods. Um license number two two zero four five. It is a change of officer application. To add J P Warren to the directory and as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second? Mister Kato has seconded the motion. I think I also heard that Miss Crockett seconded the motion also. Um uh let's, we'll now have a roll call vote. Uh Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Whole Foods license number eight six zero six nine. For a change of office officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a se- second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll have a roll call vote in the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada. Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Whole Foods license number six zero one six seven. Change of off officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Whole Foods license number eight six zero seven one. For a change of officer application to add J P Warren director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second? Both Miss Grand, both Miss Crockett and Mister Grandis has seconded the motion. We will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed seven zero zero. The next request is a request made by Whole Foods license number seven six one three nine. Again, it's a change of officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote in the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Oh, I agree.
Miss Wahab Zada.
We will have Zada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter is a request from again Whole Foods license number eight six zero seven three. For a change of officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion. I make a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis, second.
Mister Grandis has seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I. Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass seven zero zero. The next matter is a request from Whole Foods, license number eight six nine one six. Again, it's a change of officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second? Mister Grandis and Miss Crockett has seconded the motion. Will now have a roll call vote before us on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Oh, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next request, a request from Whole Foods, license number eight six nine one three to change of officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis.
Mister Grandis has seconded the motion. Will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass is seven zero zero. The next request has been made by Whole Foods, license number one zero four four nine eight. This is a full service grocery. Um, again, change of officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis.
Miss Crockett and Mister Grandis have seconded the motion. Will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter therefore passes seven zero zero. The next request is a request again from Whole Foods, license number one zero four five oh oh five. This is a, the restaurant. Again, change of name, change of o- officer application to add J P Warren as director and secretary. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short has seconded the motion. Will now have a roll call vote in the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. The next matter is a request made by National Theater, license number nine five six eight four. This is a CX multipurpose facility, change officer application to add James L. Needleander as a member. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short.
Seconds.
Mister Short has seconded the motion and Miss Crockett has also seconded the motion. We'll now have a roll call vote, uh, Mister Short.
Mister Short.
Mister Cato. Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree.
Miss Crockett, I agree.
I'm sorry, Miss Crockett, Miss Crockett, Miss Crockett. And if, if you notice, there is, I, I have, I always call everyone's name in the same order.
I know.
I apologize, Miss Crockett. So Mister Anderson, agree, and the matter passes seven zero zero. Alright, the last matter on our docket is a request again from National Theater Group, L L P. National Theater, license number nine five six eight four. Um, it is to change of officer application to t- add Nicholas G. Scandolus as a member. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis.
Miss Crockett has seconded the motion along with Mister Grandis. We will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes seven zero zero. And we have finally come to all our, our beginning of our business for today. And if there are no other questions, I will now close our, write the record officially. As chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia, and according to Title Three Chapter four oh five, Office of Open Government, I move that the A B C board hold a closed meeting on September sixteenth two thousand twenty for the purpose of discussing and hearing reports concerned ongoing or planned investigations of alleged criminal or civil misconduct or violations of law or regulations and seeking legal advice from our legal counsel on the board's investigative agenda, legal agenda and licensing agenda for September sixteenth two thousand twenty as published in the D C Register on August twenty fifth to the second twenty. Is there a second? Mister Short has seconded the motion. We will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly second, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Mister Cato, I agree.
Miss Wahvada.
Rimo Wahvada, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Ed Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. As it appears that the motion has passed seven zero zero, I hereby give notice that A B C board will hold as aforementioned closed meeting.